I'm certainly no help.
All right.
If I could ask that people, when they're not talking, if you can mute your mic, that would be great.
Hold on, let's make sure it's working. We're now being recorded, okay? I just want to absolutely sure. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I'll repeat this. If for people that are not talking, if you can mute your mic, that would be terrific so we don't get a lot of background noise. Thank you.
Yes. Welcome everyone to the May 4th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through Microsoft Team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing 603-664-0240 and the conference ID for this meeting. First up tonight, we'll start with a roll call vote. I am James Jensen. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, present.
Andy Knapp.
Present.
Ron Allard.
Allard, present.
Candace Krantz.
Candace had a West Coast meeting, so she's gonna try and join us later. You'll have to fill that position with an alternate.
And, yep, Buddy Hackett. Nobody Hackett. And alternate members sitting, voting, and full member, acting as full members tonight. Donna Masucci.
Here.
And Andrew M.
Andrew M is here.
Thank you. And we also have the Town Planner, Marcia Gases, with us. We will put the agenda minutes off to the end and start with number two. Roy Hurlbert, request by applicant for site review to add the 5,000 square foot storage building.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Joe Coronati with Jones and Beach Engineers, representing Roy Hurlbert. I think he's on the line as well.
I am. Welcome.
Excellent.
Thanks.
I heard you pop in there at the beginning, and then, I believe, the last meeting, we were continued for a couple of items, and landscaping around the rear of the building, as well as finalizing the comments from Two Boys and King. We have received a sign-off letter from Two Boys and King on the design, and I think we've satisfied the comments the board had on the last submission. And I guess that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have, or, but I believe we've satisfied the comments that we've received to date.
Great, thank you. Open up to the board, any questions or comments? Yeah, one question, and this is, I guess, for you, and Marcia can chime in. So on Sheet C4, Note 8, it says that submit the as-built plans to Public Works. So we don't have officially Public Works Department in Barrington. What's the intent? Who should that go to?
Well, sorry, maybe it's more of a question for the board, but the as-built, I would think, would be the foundation certificate. I don't think you require a complete as-built of the whole site.
I'm just going by what the plans say.
Right. Normally, that would be the, like, a foundation cert would go to the building department.
Yep. Zoning Administrator. So what should that note say? Marcia, do you have an opinion?
That's C4, Note 8. Could you, Joe, can you bring up your plan?
Sure.
It's easier for you to bring it up.
C4, Note 8, it says, "As-built plans shall be submitted to Department of Public Works."
Yeah, that's, that can be eliminated.
Eliminated or changed to zoning department, or?
Well, the as-built, the as-built would...
Well, yeah, I was kind of questioning that because they have the submit three copies of the plan anyway, right?
Correct. Um. I don't remember if we asked for as-built for drainage. We have to show that the engineer has to.
Well, we have to know.
Just change it to the planning department.
Yeah, I mean, we just have to know because we do have a note that says, hey, something may come up during construction, and then the engineer may have to modify the plans. So when we get, when it's all said and done, then we need, we need the final as-built plan to be somewhere.
Yeah. And the building department would always have any copies of anything in regards to the building itself, but.
All right, so we're gonna change note number eight to the Land Use Office? Yeah, I think that's appropriate. That's all I had. Any other questions from the board? Looking for hands, I see none. I'm sorry. They changed the icon bar here a little bit. If I have no questions from the board, I'm gonna open up for public comment. If there's anyone that has questions. Public comment. Marcia, it says here, application to be approved. Didn't we, did we already approve the application? We're moving on, right?
Yeah, whereabouts is that?
It's Chair Act.
Oh, is that in my staff recommendations?
Yeah.
Hold on. Is that a carryover?
Okay, that's what I figured. So if there's no other questions from the board, I'm gonna read the draft notice of decision.
Oh, it says it was accepted as complete.
Right, we were holding off on, right, we accept it as complete.
Yeah.
We've addressed any waivers. I don't remember that there were any.
No, no.
And so we're down to approving the application.
Yeah.
All right. This is to inform the Barrington Planning Board, as condition we approved the application referenced above, all of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed, unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Precedent conditions, add the following plan notes. Waste oil be disposed of according to DES standards. Fuel will be stored in approved containers. Vegetated buffer must be maintained along.
What was that?
Rear property.
Rear property, yep. And can we add a D, change Public Works in Sheet C4, Note 8, to Land Use Office?
Yep. D on Sheet C4, change Public Works to Land Use Office on Note 8. Revise the following plan notes at the New Hampshire DES Subsurface Bureau CA number. All issues from D and K addressed. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board's signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3 with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final complete records of all items submitted during review for the Town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of approved plans meeting the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11x17 in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. Where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority of vote of the board so long as it is applied for at least 30 days prior to expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on the site plan per RSA 674-39.
Hey, I got a question here. So the application number that's listed on a notice of decision is different than what's listed on the agenda. So what's the correct application number?
Okay, the only thing, let me see. The number isn't important because they change from week to week, you know, to meeting to meeting. The case number is the one that counts.
All right.
I know, I know. But so I'm just saying, I'm looking at the agenda, and it says, we're at number two, there's application 220-50-RC-21. On the notice of decision, it says 223-26-C1, you know, RCSDAO20. That's the, the application number that's listed, the agenda is different than what's on the application. That's why I'm asking. It's not the case number, it's the, it's the actual application number.
Okay, let's see if there's a typo. Which one, so it's not, okay, 220-50.
Right. Now look at the notice of decision. It says 223-26.
Well, here it says 220-50. On the staff recommendations.
Right. But that's not what the notice of decision.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so I don't.
It's, yeah, it might have been a, let me see, because it is 220-50, okay.
I thought it might be a cut-and-paste type error here.
Quite possibly, but let me, I'll verify what it is, okay?
All right, but it should be 220, right?
Yeah, that's what we have. Yep, I'll make sure it's all, yeah.
Yeah, it's 220 lot 50, so it should be 51, Jeff.
Okay.
All right, so the notice of decision.
We'll make sure, yeah.
Application.
I have one question on the, do any of the plans get recorded? Do you guys record the site plan?
We do not.
All right. Nothing needs to be recorded, you just need paper copies, paper sets where the condition is satisfied?
Correct. Well, we need, we need what the submittal is because they will be scanned. Okay, so we need two large copies for our flat files, okay?
And then a digital copy?
We need a 11x17 paper copy because we actually scan those after they are stamped and everything. And we keep that for our records, that's what we can make copies from for people when they come in.
All right. So two large and one small, and then, and no Mylar?
No Mylar.
Sounds good.
Under Erosion and Sediment Control, the last page of the plan, it talks about the mulch. Hay, straw, or other mulch, when needed, should be applied immediately after seeding, and it gives a rate of 90 pounds per 1,000 square feet. And back on the landscape plan, there's talk of use of topsoil. Given the sandiness of this area, you might want to consider increasing the amount of organic material for water retention. So definitely mulching.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions before we just enter motion? All right, we're looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve application 220-50-RC-21-SR.
Second the motion. Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp.
I think Donna was trying to talk, but I, she's muted, okay.
We'll have to unmute Donna, we're gonna take a vote. We'll start, Andy M. Andy M, approve. Donna Masucci.
Approve.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. All in favor, motion passes. Congratulations and best of luck to you. I saw you moving in some snowmobiles today, so exciting things.
Hopefully some jet skis.
Yeah, maybe they were jet skis, those, probably jet skis, right?
Thank you very much for everything. Yes.
Thank you very much, all members of the board, appreciate it. My pleasure. All right, number three. Mr. Garvey, 239-11 TC 21, two-sub. Request by applicant for a two-lot subdivision.
Evening, folks. Very simply, need a continuance. Surveyor is finally coming out of his COVID fog. Talked to him yesterday and today. Looks like we're almost there. We've been working, I've been working on DOT wetlands and with the attorneys to get the excess right-of-way issue settled. Next week, I will be getting with Chris and Raymond to address their concerns. The issues that we're gonna add to the plan, we're gonna add a note on the driveway. Erosion control note is to be added. The legend is updated. And the plan is actually both existing conditions, subdivision seat, because it's all, it's basically all one sheet. So that's all I got for tonight.
Very good. What are we looking for a date to continue to, do you think?
We should be good next time, around two weeks out.
All right. That puts, what's today? The 18th of May, you thinking?
Yep.
Full schedule?
Not necessarily, but I need to have, I, I need to have the information at least awake ahead of time. We can't have this showing up right before.
Yep, so you'd have to have it by Tuesday next week to make the 18th meeting. That seem doable?
I think so, yeah, because he's got most everything as of today. Most everything was there, so.
All right. Does the board have any questions? Jeff, I thought you might have had one, but.
No, no, not that I can think of.
Okay, sorry. Anybody else? Hearing none, motion to continue to May 18.
I make a motion to continue this matter to May 18.
I second.
Motion by Steve Diamond, seconded by Jeff Brand. Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Continue to May 18. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, folks, have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Moving on to number four, we have 250-89-RC-21-SR. Owner Lloyd Brower. Request by applicant for site review to allow permanent outdoor seating with waivers. Dan, are you here for that one? Unmute. Oh, you're still muted.
Yes, I am.
There you go. All right. What do you got for us?
That's a first for Dan.
Let me see if I can. Hold on.
So we're looking to make this permanent, right? Not just seasonal, is that the, that the plan?
Well, it'll only be used in nice weather.
Yeah.
So, but it's gonna be there all the time.
We think we're gonna add it to, the intention is to add it to their site plan for.
Well, a copy of the plan I provided.
Yeah.
Will attach to it.
Board of any questions?
Dan, this is Jeff Brand. Yeah, so if I, reading through the narrative and looking at the plan here, if I interpret, oh, tell me if I'm interpreting correctly, that you're saying you've got the sewage system good for 79 individuals to be seated in the restaurant, and you're saying that you would have the 28 seats outside. You could move the bar stools from inside to outside. So can I assume that you would never exceed 79 people seated between both the inside and the outside?
Yes, because the oxy inside's 49, and then plus the 28, I stay under that. And then if it's nice weather out, people won't be inside, so they take the stools out physically, put them outside, and then put them back in for rainy day.
All right, so would you, as, you know, we, on the notice of decision, we had things like jersey barriers to be pinned, you gotta have the hours of operation, seasonal landscaping. Would you have a problem saying that total seating of the ins, total of the inside and outside seating is limited to 79 people?
Yeah, I think it's 79 or 76.
I, I thought in your submittal, you said 79. I'll look it up here. But would you have a problem with less than 79?
No.
Okay.
78.
What? 78?
Yeah.
All right, wait. Okay, I'm looking at a project narrative. The subject is designed for 76 people. The document I'm looking at, so it's 76.
And you're asking for two waivers, Dan?
Yes, I am.
All right. Let's, uh, let's start, I think we need to accept the application as complete. I don't know if we crossed that bridge. If we feel we have enough information to take this. I would like to first accept the application as complete if we could.
I don't have a problem with that, but do we have to, in particular, accept? Do we have to, Marcia, act on the waivers? Because that waives the requirements to have all the specification and documents that are required.
Yeah, you should waive, you should waive on the submittal that you agreed to before, sure.
Yeah, and then we could accept it as complete because
Correct.
Whether to decide to accept it as complete would depend on how it compares to the regulations. So we need to waive the requirements, the regulations, so that then we could accept it.
Correct.
But you're not supposed to act on it until you accept it as complete and take it into your purview, right?
That, that's not totally, Amy, look at that smile. That's not totally correct. In this sense, there's the middle item, so. Okay.
Then if you have questions about the waivers, we can address those first, and then we'll, we'll address waivers?
I just know we have, we have accepted waivers before
Yeah.
before we accepted the application, because that had, that has, that could have a bearing on whether we can accept the application as complete.
Sure. Fair enough. First waiver is Article 1.5, Parents 2, the checklist. Anybody have issues with waiving requirements to submit a checklist?
Make a motion to waive the checklist.
Motion by Andy Knapp.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jeff Brand.
With a note that's for application 250-89-RC-21.
Do you want the dash SR at the end?
Sure, if we want to be complete, yeah, that's fine.
All right.
All right, then.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Jeff Brand. Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Andy Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye, waivers granted. And this time, Article 3.1, general site plan specifications on a certified plan. Any questions specific to that? All right, and a motion to?
Do we need to open that for a public comment, by the way?
I don't think so, not for submittal items. There are, are rules, right?
Right, not the submittal.
Okay, yeah, that's always, one before, one after.
Yeah, I know. We've been rounding around on this one.
We'll get a right one in a few days.
I will make a motion to waive Article 3.1, general site plan specification in documents for application 250-89-RC-21-SR.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp.
Sorry, Donna.
And we, we should probably include language for approval of the waiver. We did on the last one, but.
You're correct. I think I just said it silently. Approve the waiver as the not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Thank you. Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Andy Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Article 3.1, waiver granted. All right. Open it up for more comments from the board.
Should we go back and amend the first waiver to add the language? It would be appropriate, I believe.
All right, I make a motion to amend the waiver for Article 1, for Article 1.5, Parents 2, for application 250-89-RC-21-SR, to add not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
I'll second it, since it was my motion originally.
Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Uh, amendment carries. All right, uh, all right, questions? Um, one that, Planet's comments, Dan, um, hours of operation and adding, if this is gonna be permanent now, adding some landscaping to those barriers to, uh, kind of beautify that, that parking area and dressing it up, soften those concrete barriers a little bit.
Um, there's gonna be a fence above it.
Right, but you're gonna, we talked about this being, I, I think originally in my mind, we talked about this being a temporary COVID thing and now expanding it into a permanent thing. I just, you know, putting some potted plants in front of those jersey barriers just to soften the look and make it a little bit less, uh, you know, urban attack style. Uh, the, the fence on top will be nice, but just some planters in front, you know.
Well, I'll do the, um, wooden barrels and plants.
Okay.
And then there is a lot of natural, um, landscape in there. That's why I did a colored plant for you. All the bushes and stuff and evergreen trees already there.
Yeah, out back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I think, I think the, Marcia was just thinking and talking about the, the, the front, where you pull into the parking lot, you're gonna see a line, you know, of however many jersey barriers. It'd just be a little bit nicer to see, you know, some plants in front of those jersey barriers just to soften the edge a little bit.
Added hours, add plants, yeah.
Yeah. Um, Ron, you got your hand up?
Um, yeah, was there any information on lighting plan? I didn't see that.
I, I believe there was no.
There's no change in the lighting.
So there's no additional lighting for this?
No.
No, and they're gonna close up at, uh, what'd you say, Dan? They're closing the area at eight?
Right, cleaning up by nine. So staff will be there after eight. There won't be people there.
Yeah, close to the public by eight.
Maybe I missed it, but, um, four point seven, it says here, we, we request a waiver for drainage design. I seem to recall when we were talking about this, uh, matter in the past, there were some not totally clear questions around, uh, water for beverages and cleanup, if that would be, uh, something you would have, and if so, how it would be implemented.
Um, no, well, the, uh, it's paper products and stuff, and then everything, they'll pick up the trash, staff will, and, um, they'll go clean it inside, because of the health codes and everything.
Yeah, so your point?
Go ahead.
So your point is there's not going to be like a water station, a beverage station outside, uh, self-serve type thing, and, uh, cleanup is like from buckets brought from indoors?
Yeah.
Okay, Donna?
So, yeah, that was my question about how to clean the tables and sanitize them, um, benches. What, by the way, what kind of tables are you putting out there? Picnic tables or just, uh, like bistro tables?
They had picnic tables there already, and then I took some, um, pine logs, the live edging, and resurfaced the, uh, tops. So there'll be, uh, earthen colors and live edged pine, two inches thick.
And, and just to refresh everyone's memory, the, the two sheds on the back of the serving area, they were gonna have a serving stage. They'll be cleaning, you know, many places just use a spray. They don't use water and stuff, you know, spray and rags. And then they'll bring it in and out of the kitchen or interior facility is what he had stated last time. But they'll have a staging area, um, in those two sheds that he has proposed in the back piece there.
And that adds, is a, adds to the white fence. So there'll be another twenty fences screening from out back from the daycare.
No, that's good. I mean, I'm, I'm happy with that.
All right, does the board have any other questions before we open it up to public comment?
I do have a question about, oh my goodness. Who is that? Is that you, Andy?
No, no, I think it's Ron. He's got a soft voice in the background. Go ahead, Donna.
Oh, okay. So my question is, you're, you're doing it during the summertime. Um, I'm just asking the board too. So should we have something in there that says like, uh, from, from, um, daylight savings time until, uh, you know, um, when we fall back? Something like that? So it doesn't, like, some people don't mind standing outside and talking, even though it's dark. So is that something we could put in there or should not put in there?
Well, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, you do have, uh, Indian summer and stuff. Um, and then sometime, I think one of these sixty degrees at Christmas. Who knows what the weather's gonna do?
It, it, under the per, tip, current climate, I mean, the, the reality of if COVID persists and they decide to do the outdoor dining bubbles to keep their business open, you know, i- in my mind, trying to be flexible as far as understanding what the future may hold for us all. Um, I think noise, like Donna, I think is a good point. And, you know, so in, in lighting, if, if, if it goes into the later months or the earlier months because it's nice out and lighting doesn't allow for people to be out there at seven o'clock because it's dark, that would be the only issue that I, I certainly see coming up.
Um, well, I guess I question, I mean, uh, uh, all of these businesses, regardless of whether we got daylight or not, are limited in their hours of operation and that's, that's gonna be specified. So, uh, why, why, you know, whether it's dark or not, we're, we're still limiting the hours of, of operation. So does that really matter?
Um, I guess because we have a lighting requirement, and if it's a safety issue that they're out there serving food in the dark at eight, seven o'clock at night, even though they haven't gone past their hours of operation, there, there's, there's no, you know.
Um, can I comment?
Yep.
There is already a green light there.
Okay.
To the board.
Ooh, Ron, go ahead.
Lighting issues come up, do we, do we need a, a lighting waiver? I think we do.
Marcia, what are your feelings on a lighting waiver? As he's, Dan just said, there's, there's approved lighting there that may be adequate?
Well, and this has been an ongoing, they've been ongoing, this has been an ongoing business. We're not changing anything. I, was it, it, it apparently was adequate for the last six months. Um.
Yeah, uh, well, I don't know if that's accurate. I mean, there was some temporary, you know,
Well, there are.
COVID situations going on that I think adequacy was lacked, you know? So, I mean, I don't have a problem with granting a lighting waiver. Um, but, uh, i- i- if that's just, if it's appropriate or if it's not to mention and, you know, they need to.
But this is on the, I mean, the parking lot's not changing. So they're going by their prior approval with respect to the parking areas. Now, we're, we're talking about an enclosed area, even though it's exterior to the building, it, it, uh, in essence is just an extension of the dining areas. And that's not something that normally, you know, interior spaces aren't something we would normally get involved in. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, look, look at, uh, the, the motorsports place.
Fair enough.
Heating in that, in that storage area, that's not something we get into. We only get into the exterior lighting.
I can accept that.
I have trouble with that though, Jeff. This is exterior seating. And normally we require a lighting plan with photometrics. We were limiting the hours. I'm okay granting the waiver. But I think not, not having a waiver submitted is overlooking the regulations.
I, I think that's a reasonable, that's reasonable, Ron.
All right. So Dan, would you like to add a lighting waiver we can address tonight? Just a waiver from addition, lighting requirements?
Yeah, I can't give you a written.
No. I think we do it verbally if you, uh, if that's what your re- re- request is.
Does I get to waive the, um, lighting requirements?
Um, that is a zoning, so we'll do that after, uh, we, we accepted the application. We'll open public comment and then address waivers. If everybody agrees.
Mm-hmm.
That's a zone?
No, it's not zoning, but.
No.
Site plan.
I mean, site review, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we want to do that after opening public comment, correct?
The first, uh, waiver?
Yep.
My two waivers doesn't cover it? My two waivers don't cover it?
The checklist waiver?
No, and then the other one?
No, I think that, I think the, the lighting is something that, that, uh, needs to be discussed after it's accepted.
All right. Does the board have any other questions before we open public comment? Hearing none, I'll open public comment. If anybody has questions, concerns, you can raise your hand or star six to unmute if you've called in, um, or you can use the chat box. I'll check it to see if. All right, hearing none, I'll close public comment. All right, so, uh, let's address the lighting waiver.
So we're talking about the outdoor lighting design, uh, standards in four point twelve. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion to waive the requirements of four point twelve of the site plan review regulations for application two-five-zero-eight-nine-RC-21-SR.
Second. I have a motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Um, Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Waiver granted.
Andy, I gotta tell you, that was the most unenthusiastic second I have ever heard.
It does not sound inspired tonight.
I'm, I'm on the struggle bus tonight.
On the struggle bus. All right. Uh, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, a motion to grant, um, or approve rather.
We accept it as complete, right?
We accepted the application as complete.
Okay.
Right? I just got check marks all in my paper. Yeah, so I'll read the, um, notice, draft notice of decision. This is in to form the Barrington Planning Board, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board has conditionally approved your application referenced above. Please note if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day by twen- the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. The following conditions apply: Jersey barriers to be pinned, hours of operation eight PM. What, what is the opening time, Dan?
Uh, eleven-thirty.
All right, we just have to add that to that note, whatever that is.
Eleven to, uh, eleven to nine?
Nine, sorry. Yep, nine. Eleven to nine, close to the public at eight. Add seasonal landscaping along barriers.
And we should add a D, the total of inside and outside seating is limited to seventy-six seats.
Yeah, that's what the permit is.
Yep.
Yeah.
Add that total combined seating not to exceed seventy-six seats. I don't have all the other jargon on there. Marcia, I'm gonna read it off this other one if, if it's relative.
Um, I, it's not really relative to this one, I think. I simplified this, uh, notice of decision.
All right, sounds good. There's no other questions, a motion is in order.
Everyone question, um, I should add the waiver for four point twelve, um, onto that little list. I'll make sure that's on that, okay?
Yep.
Great, all three waivers should be on there, correct?
Well, the other ones were submittal, so I'll let those, those come.
Add waiver for four twelve lighting as E.
All right, I make a motion to approve application
Hear me?
I'll second it. I started writing it and Jeff took over.
Well, you were kind of moving a little slow, so I just thought I'd help out.
I told you it's a struggle bus. Seconded by Andy Knapp. Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Congratulations, best of luck, Dan.
Thank you.
Hope this works well for them. Take care.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to number five, request by applicant for site review, two sixty-three twenty-eight RC twenty-one SR. Allow a business on the first floor and residential use above on Caleb Highway slash Pierce Road, map two sixty-three lot twenty-eight on one point eight-nine acres in the regional commercial zone. Um, who do we have tonight for this?
Hi, uh, this is Nate Bog from American Patrol Association. I believe one or both McDougals are also present.
Yep, we're here, Nate. Thank you.
Welcome. If you want to give us a little rundown?
Yeah, the McDougals would like to, uh, build a house. Uh, access would be off of Pierce Road, but it, it does front Caleb Highway. Um, upstairs would be a residence, downstairs mudroom, utilities, uh, personal garage. And Mr. McDougal runs a graphic design, uh, shop. Um, and he would like to have that downstairs. Also, he's a, a one-man operation. Um, and he would like to run that out of his house, which, uh, may be what triggered the mixed-use, uh, deal and the need for site plan review. So, um, we've asked for some waivers, we feel it's kind of, uh, uh, not much more than a, a residential, uh, project. Um, we have a section design and, uh, we're offering an infiltration trench, uh, down below the, the building and, uh, parking areas to, uh, make sure that we can infiltrate, uh, the runoff from the impervious, uh, uh, areas. And, um, if we need other waivers, we're willing to ask for them.
Hey, Nate, can you share your plans?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know. I'd be happy to. I'm not familiar with, uh, uh, Microsoft Teams. And so I'm just, uh, on my phone. I, how would you like me to share it?
Okay, let me, I'm trying to, uh, to get these up that I have on my desktop and I was having a difficult time with it. So I want to, I'll give it another shot. Usually the engineers are, are a little bit easier, have a little bit easier time for some reason putting them up than I, so.
Yeah, I'm used to Zoom, unfortunately, uh.
I think it works almost the same way. So if you can, uh.
Yeah, but he's on his phone, he may not have that.
Let's see.
I mean, I have a computer. I could, I could, uh, join if that's a possibility.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, while you're figuring that out, we'll start with board questions, um, if, if you guys, if.
Can I, can I start, Jamie? Um, I did go over this a bit with John and I don't, they kept stressing the, the whole business, home bu- business, home occupation part of it. This is in a commercial zone and they're able to do this because it is a commercial zone. And that's the reg, why it's required to have a site plan. This is not considered a home business. This is in the regional commercial district. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear from a zoning standpoint, um, That it's, it is a mixed-use development.
Right.
That's not saying that you have to have the ultimate of everything. We're just saying that is a mixed-use development.
Could someone characterize the level of the number of guests who might be visiting over a given time period? I'm aware if the access is on Pierce Road, it's a town road and it's maintained, but it's fairly narrow and not paved, as I recall.
Where did that?
Oh, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, so basically so basically all, like, obviously I'll have my wife and I have a one-year-old kid. And then as far as like, you know, traffic coming into the business, it depends on the day, obviously. Some days I don't get any customers there. And then there is the chance of, of a couple customers coming per day. But it's not a heavily traffic area.
And also, deliveries he gets to run his business are the same as you and I might get at our, in our homes, UPS and other regular delivery type services. There's no need for tractor trailers to navigate the driveway or Pierce Road.
Yes.
Right.
Is it correct that looking at one of the plans here that there's actually two driveway cuts off of Pierce?
That's what's proposed to just split up the residence and his business end of things, keep them separate, yes.
Well, because I was looking at the comments from the road agent and he's talking about a driveway permit. Well, it does say flares on each, no, on each side of driveway. So it, he used the singular and he talks about the proposed driveway. So did, when the road agent visited, did you discuss with the road agent, you were thinking about two driveway cuts and how does that square with the site review regulations that say we normally would approve only one cut per, per property?
Car can speak to it, I guess, but also it's, it could be reconfigured to be, to be one. It was just trying to kind of separate the personal and business end of thing.
Yeah, I mean, ideally I'd, I'd like to, but obviously if it's not, if it's not manageable, then I guess we'll just have to deal with it.
Did you discuss that with the road agent when you looked at it?
I personally, I have not spoken to the road agent, no.
What, I'm trying to look. What's, you can, there are there's, you can have two under certain, under certain requirements, right? But they have to be a certain distance apart. I can't remember, isn't there a caveat for that, Jeff?
Yeah, I have to pull out the bar, but I mean, it doesn't say, it is not a given that it has to be one, but it says that the board is supposed to supposed to be working towards only one. And then we can consider, you know, others, but this is also, you know, I, the, the road agent should give us input on having multiple driveway cuts and reading what information he provided does not indicate he was aware that we're two driveway cuts.
I, yeah, I guess, and from my immediate perspective, you know, this isn't highest and best use for the area. I know it's a small lot and limited, limited size there to build on.
Right.
But it is the commercial zone and, you know, intended to be commercial space now, not knowing intentions and futures. I mean, that, that property could be used for something else down the road. So it's, it's, it's not always, you know, to, to assume you're gonna use it as a home forever doesn't always make it, you know. We can't make those assumptions, you know, based on a commercial lot. So I guess that's kind of where we gotta do a little bit more due diligence than if, you know, this was somewhere else and, you know. Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, kind of tagging on to what you're talking about. Table six defines parking requirements too for commercial properties.
Right.
And addressed. So that needs to be addressed.
And it also has in table, in table five, talks about off-street loading requirements for if you have a retail business, how much space you have to provide for the unloading of materials when you have deliveries.
Yeah, and, you know, as far as drainage, I think you've got to do some drainage design. I mean, proximity to 125 to get a waiver from drainage, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem appropriate.
And, and it's a requirement, well, I guess, along those same lines. I mean, I got a question. You, you talk about the, this infiltration trench. And all it says on the plans, it shows a dotted line, says it'll be 18 inches wide, 24 inches deep, but there's no construction details, what material goes and meets state standards. And how do you know that it's going to be adequate to, to handle the water that's coming off those drives and, and the building? And when you say that it was, what, less than 7% of the property, but you know, that, you still gotta demonstrate that in fact the infiltration system is going to handle the runoff, which includes the drives, even though I don't know whether you're proposing that driveways be asphalt or whether they be gravel, but in either case, they're counted as impervious surface.
Ron, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I have a concern here too, or a question. You go to table two, the dimensional requirements. If you're residential, you need 80,000 square feet and this property is only 76,000 square feet. But they're applying, you know, commercial setbacks. So we're kind of betooked in between, which doesn't seem appropriate to me.
The board has to realize, and I think I just want to confirm again, this is not considered a residential development. This is a mixed-use development and has to be treated as such. Whether that, when you look at the drainage or whatever, you, you would want to review it to the level that is necessary. And I'm not talking about doing, you know, that, you know, going overboard, but this is a site plan that requires all the requirements of any other site plan.
Right, and we've already seen, for instance, that addition on the back of the, behind Caleb's on that building off to the side there, that we had to do a drainage analysis and, and Marcia, you're the one that detected the problem with the runoff of, of the roof, the way they were going to do it. And that was a much smaller footprint than what we're talking here. And the requirements, in the site plan review regulations is that whatever drainage they've got planned, that they've got to demonstrate it'll meet the 50-year event for a commercial property. And we have no data upon which to work, which brings me up to the waiver that was asked for with respect to the drainage system. And I, without any data to demonstrate that in fact this trench, infiltration trench, what the details are, will in fact meet the requirements for the 50-year runoff. I, I don't know how we consider it.
It's very similar to the one you just approved for the motorsports. In essence.
Yeah, a lot of similarities, but the other thing with that one is it was an existing business to kind of. What are, what are the thoughts on a short traffic analysis? I mean, I don't think we need a long one, sure, but is it short? Or is that?
Yeah, just to show that Pierce Road can handle the load, which it should be minimal.
Marcia, I see you not.
Well, I don't think we need a traffic analysis. My concern would be in regard, and, and this is kind of what Mark went on, but I would, are we hauling in any kind of trailers with vehicles on them? Bearing in mind, this is a dirt road, not really set up, e- even though it's a town road, it's certainly not at the level I would consider probably sufficient. I can't make that determination. Is there anything that needs to be done to it based upon what's being brought in? Just, I have questions about that because I know Pierce Road can get a little, especially in the spring, can be a little bit tough. What are they bringing in? Are they gonna bring on, bring in race cars on flatbeds to detail them? I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
You know? I would expect that if, if Mark had concerns about that, he would post the road then. I mean, that's typically how you handle it in those situations, is you post a road if you have, if you have weight issues with it.
Do we?
Well, actually, you wanted to address that as part of site plan and decide now whether there was going to be an issue. There may not be an issue, but there may. I just don't know. We don't, we haven't posted any roads and the soft board would have to post them. And they haven't been anyone, any posted right, right now, because they're hard to enforce. You wouldn't want, you would more, I think, look at it as, is there something that needs to be done to improve the road, and I'm not saying huge, but improve the road based upon the load level that's gonna happen? Is it gonna be sufficient? You know, is it gonna be sufficient? Is that road or that section of road gonna be sufficient?
Well, getting back to my point too, the, the regional commercial requirement for front setback is 75 feet and they're only doing 40 in the plan as far as I can tell. So that's a problem for me.
No, I think there's 75 feet setback from 125.
Yeah. Pierce Road though is the frontage, right?
They're meeting with, they're meeting with zoning. I mean, this is lot is inside. Not only that, I think this is under the green.
Is the frontage Pierce, Pierce Road?
125.
Oh, 125, they're accessing from Pierce Road.
They're, they, they have, they're, they have frontage on both sides. The setback is from 125.
Okay, I got it.
Got it? Okay, great.
But they're not, I mean, for a commercial. No, I don't have a problem with that. I've always envisioned in my mind Pierce Road being a nice little, you know, somewhere down the road being a nice little pull-off, you know, commercial strip on both sides of the road. It would be an ideal development situation, you know, from a town perspective, but it's certainly not there yet. But does this, I mean, how would the state feel about the driveway off of 125 as opposed to Pierce Road?
They would not like that.
No.
Jamie, Jamie, I'd like to point out just as a reminder that the town is in a land development agreement for commercial development up off of Pierce Road behind Liberty Truck with the town-owned property there. So there, at some point, that road is likely gonna be upgraded or at least a good portion of it upgraded. So the access off Pierce, I don't see as very impactful. At least long-term. It might be initially, but, but the long-term plan is gonna, all of that's gonna come in play with the upgrade of that, that property back there and the geological work that they're finishing up now up there.
They still are, yeah, it's been a long time, bit since we've heard about it, but that's what I was thinking of, you know, when we went through that with, before with traffic going down that road and, but I think.
And there's gonna be, there's gonna be, have to be a complete traffic study because where Pierce Road intersects, you have oh, the, I'm drawing a blank on the road across from it there that is.
Newtown Plains.
Newtown Plains Road, yeah, which is a potentially high-hazard road because there have been a whole bunch of accidents right there.
Yeah, and isn't the other end of Pierce Road, doesn't that have an insufficient culvert or a little like old concrete pipe, type setup? That was an issue going back for that?
I don't.
There's some, there's been, we have some, we have water, we have drainage. I mean, that, that was my concern only that, that just to make sure that Pierce Road is adequate for what they want to do.
So what was, what was Mark given as far as asking for his input on this? Did he, you know?
He got the plans.
He did, okay.
He got the plans, but I mean, he's looking at, at access, you know, making reasonable, reasonable judgments.
Right. But I guess my, the reason for my question was if his reasonable judgment was based off a, a single-family home as opposed to we're looking at as a.
Or whatever they are, trailers or whatever is going through.
In regard to the driveway, so having two driveway accesses from Pierce Road, it would be nice, if that's gonna continue to be the case, to make it possible to pull through from one to the other if there doesn't happen to be any vehicles there. And secondarily, the, the one that's at a very sharp angle, I see you probably did that to follow contour as much as possible. But that's a pretty sharp angle to access Pierce Road. One approach to soften that angle would be to have it curved to more of a 90 against Pierce at the last minute. And how much vegetation is to the left of that sharp corner? How are the sight lines?
There are some trees, I believe, along that side of Pierce Road, but the sight line is pretty good in both directions. There's no vertical impediment to be able to see in either direction. And certainly, you know, putting the second driveway more of a 90 is, you know, certainly a possibility to just make that as safe as possible.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question regarding, or comment regarding that. Reading the gentleman's description of what he is intending to work on and the reason why he's installing such a large door. I saw the driveway angle is, is a way for to be able to get a larger RV truck, trailer backed in there without having to fight the, without having to fight Pierce Road or the gully on the other side. So I, I can understand why you would want it at that kind of angle.
All right, as long as the vegetation is cut back so that you can look and continue to see what's coming on Pierce, even at that, at that angle.
Ron, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, Marcia, I apologize in advance. I said I was satisfied with the frontage requirement, but now I'm not. If you read 4.1.2, the zoning instance, the side of the parcel used to satisfy the frontage requirement specified in table two must be on the side the parcel is used to provide vehicle access to the property. Otherwise, you gotta go to the ZBA.
They're talking about taking access from the side not its frontage. But this adds frontage on both sides.
The frontage, it says the frontage requirement's gotta be with the side you provide vehicle access. That's 4.1.2, lot frontage. Otherwise, you need the ZBA approval.
Sounds like Ron knows what he's talking about. What's, what's the real story, Marcia?
He's got frontage, he's got frontage on both sides in this case.
Right, but I'm thinking back to the one over here where you're taking access from road not your frontage. There was issues. So I think Ron's got a point. You know, they can do it, it's just gonna, you know, it's another barrier to cross.
Well, they're taking access from their, their frontage. They have frontage on Pierce Road and they have frontage on 125.
And right, yeah, he's saying you can take access and call that your frontage, but you have to adhere to the setback on that side then. You can't have the setback for your rearage on your frontage, what you choose to be a frontage and take the, take the setbacks from one and then the frontage from the other. The setback, right, from your frontage was 75 feet. The setback, right, from your frontage was seventy-five feet, that's what Ron.
I, I understand what he's saying. I've gotta process that for how it fits in.
I'm flopping back and forth. Ron, you're very, you're very quiet, Ron, so I don't mean to talk over you if I do.
If I have anything to add, I will. Um. But I, but I think four point one point two means very clear, it's gotta be seventy-five feet from Pierce. If that's the way you're taking your vehicle to access. Or you have to go to the ZBA.
Well, answer.
Regional Commercial. Front is seventy-five. The, the green belt shall be maintained, Andy, you gotta maintain a green belt on that if you choose that to be a frontage.
So, I mean.
I'm sorry, I, uh, my computer locked up and I had to come back in. What, what article are you looking at? Uh, four, one, um, the setbacks, um, and how you choose your frontage and your setbacks if you choose your frontage.
Table two for Regional Commercial is seventy-five feet of frontage requirement. And if you look at four point one point two, it says the frontage is done from where you get your vehicle access. Which in this case will be Pierce Road. So you need to be seventy-five feet back.
And then, you know, under strict adherence, we gotta look at four, two, three, parents, five, the green belt buffer. Um, you know, fifty-foot green buffer. Between one for twenty-five. This, I think we've gone back and forth on this one, whether you want to block the business or you wanna show the business, but it is part of the requirements under four, two, three, parents, five, to have a fifty-foot vegetated buffer between one twenty-five. Um, and it would need to be planted if not, if it's, isn't, isn't sufficient visually, visually attractive, vegetated area.
It, what, yeah, I mean, you don't have it as a barrier. We wanna be able to see the businesses, but you wanna have landscaping that's kind of, you don't wanna block it out.
Yeah. Andy, I think you had your hand up?
I do, I just had a, i- as we're talking through this, um, it, it begs the question of this being a non-conforming lot. Um, so it, it's a, it has development potential, but it's, but if you, if you were to try and meet your setbacks on both sides, it, it's not really possible, so it makes it non, it would make it a non-conforming lot. So it would just be a waiver from the conformance, wouldn't it?
You know, I, you know, and John Huckins, um, had weighed in on this and I want to, cause I mean, we got the.
But yeah, yeah, um, I agree, Andy, as well as the, the, I mean, the, the idea is if you're gonna call Pierce Road your frontage, can you move the house towards one twenty-five and then meet it, or can you not? And if not, then the waiver is appropriate because of the size of the lot and we can discuss that, but we need the waivers.
Right, I, I, what I'm looking at is if you get your seventy-five feet on one twenty-five, um, you don't have enough left, if I'm looking at this correctly, for setback on Pierce.
You, you wouldn't need seventy-five feet on one twenty-five if you called Pierce your frontage, right?
Right, but even on one twenty-five is a, um, state highway, so you need, uh, fifty anyway, right off the bat, or? Marsha might know that better.
Fifty from the right away, I think, yeah.
Right.
It's tossed around so much, um.
So you've gotta be back off the right away and then fifty feet from there. Is, or no, no, no.
No, 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 we're just.
It would just be fifty feet, but.
Jeff, you wanna jump in here? You got a question? Yeah, uh, so we've got the, those frontage issues, we, uh, so we've actually got other, uh, I guess I got others, uh, questions about this whole thing. I mean, the planners brought up and, uh, Ron Allen's already brought up about the parking. We talked about the loading. We're talking about the setbacks. Talking about the landscaping, other things that were noted was the, uh, lighting plan. There's nothing about erosion controls during construction. Uh, there's no details for construction of the infiltration trench. No calculations that have been provided to show that that's adequate, no plan index. Uh, you know, the detail for the driveway construction with so on and so forth. So, uh, you know, I, I guess my only question, I mean, these folks are sitting here listening to all of us and wondering what we're going to do here, um, with all of the things that we're talking about. We've got a couple of things to do. There's been waivers that have been requested. Uh, and so, you know, we need to decide whether we can proceed with those and also whether we can accept the application or not. So I'm just wondering where we go from here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we're, we're not prepared to accept the application as complete, probably not even close, in, in my opinion, um, but. I would agree with you on that. We're gonna have a long, a long list to think, I mean, it may be either be come back with a long list of waivers or a long list of, of, of more information, but I think, well, I'm kinda put my mind that we're more in a design review phase than a, you know, site plan review. Well, I guess I'm, I'm with you on that. We can hear what the rest of the board has to say, but, yeah, I feel like, uh, with all of the missing information, things that haven't been provided, I would find it difficult myself to, uh, support a motion to accept it as complete. With that said, then, then we get back to the, the waivers about the wetland delineation. And I did see areas on this property, and I guess I would need a discussion or like to hear from the applicant, uh, about how they support, uh, the waiver for a wetland delineation criteria in a, a wetland scientist stamp. Because if you've got water coming off impervious service, you're actually constructing an infiltration trench to deal with water issues on a property that has water. So why would we want to waive the, the wetland delineation criteria?
The wetland was delineated by Jim Gob along the test pits that were dug on the property back in September of last year. Um, the information was taken from that survey, um, and, and used. And I'm just trying to control costs for the applicants, you know, obviously we can do a drainage design, make sure to show that the fifty-year storm event will be, uh, adequately handled, uh, with the, the increase in impervious or with the addition of impervious area. Um, details on erosion control, silt fence, uh, how you, how the driveway is going to be installed. Um, certainly can be, can be added, um.
Well, if you've got, uh, and I do see it appears that you have taken on one of the drawings, and the drawings need to be, you know, labeled sequentially. I have a lot of sheet one-on-ones. You know, if you're gonna set a plan, we oughta have like sheet one, sheet two, whatever. But I did notice on one of these, uh, it does have a, it, it does show test pits, contours, what appears to be delineation of wetlands, uh, although that's not covered in legend, so it's our town. So, uh, why, why wouldn't he, why wouldn't you provide the survey that were done last year? I mean, why, why, why is that a problem?
Why would we provide it?
Not provide it.
Not, uh, well, I, I, it should've been, uh, included. It's, uh, it was not recorded. Um, but the surveyor, who is no relation to me, um, was glad to, okay, was sharing it with us, uh, had information. Uh, normally I would expect a, a, a board to be concerned about where the boundaries are, are they known and whatnot? And all four property corners are in, uh, clearly, uh, delineated, uh, with the boundary plan. And so that was a good starting point for, uh, um, drawing the site plan.
Well, if you have the survey that was done, I, I just question why you just wouldn't provide that instead of asking for a waiver? And on the plan that you did provide to us, I see a line which is, uh, double dots and dashes. And it's unclear to me whether that's a delineation of the wetland area or whether that's the fifty-foot buffer that's required.
Uh, there's no fifty-foot buffer. This is a lot of record.
Okay.
For the wetlands. That is what they miss.
Okay, got it. Okay, so that makes the, that makes the, uh, that waiver make more sense now. I guess that's, all right, pre-setback nineteen ninety-seven. Okay, uh, on the other waiver for the, well, the other two waivers, one is, uh, you asked for drainage design. Uh, so, I mean, you've heard some of our discussion and questions with respect to this, you know, commercial zone needing to meet the fifty-year rain event uh, and demonstrating that your trench would be adequate. So, can you, can you tell us why you think it's justified to give you a waiver for four point seven drainage design?
Uh, well, my feeling was it's, uh, uh, you know, seven percent is being developed. Uh, the soil is Hinckley soil, uh, very well excessively drained. Um, so, stone trench and certainly easy to provide a, a detail for that, um, to show how the water is going to go into there. We can, we can do a calculation to show that that's gonna be adequate, uh, or certainly provide something that's adequate for the fifty-year storm.
Uh, yeah, I would agree with the town planner. This doesn't have to be as extensive because you're not talking about ponds or you're not talking about, uh, drains and, and other things. However, uh, what you just stated with respect to demonstrating that this, uh, this infiltration trench will handle the fifty-year event is something that we would need to see. That's in the requirements.
Have you decided on frontage yet or setback, frontage and, um?
Well, I guess, I, I guess we don't, obviously, you know, we have some serious questions. I think there's some information and, and as the, the chair and I as co-chair have said, and we can poll the rest of the board, but we would have difficulty accepting it. The question is, do we need to resolve that particular issue right at this moment? Uh, if in fact, we're not gonna move forward with acting on the waivers or on accepting the application itself?
Thank you. Um, my suggestion would be on that particular one, now that my head's spinning on it, um, is, cause John Huckins had looked at this, but I think what we need to is go back, John is the zoning administrator. Um, and, uh, because he would be the one, it would be his decision, his determination, um, first of all. Um, and, and obviously we wanna know what, where he was coming from so that we can have some type of, uh, answer for that one.
Um, yeah, and then that'll give us some insight into the buffers. Um, I guess I gotta, I gotta go in some sort of sequential order before I get confused. Um, minimum lot size, Ron brought up, we're under that threshold, right?
Four, what?
Lot size?
There's, the size of the lot is irrelevant.
Only if it's residential too, it's, it, so.
It is. Ron, I can't hear you, can you?
It, you know, the lot size is, uh, it's residential's eighty thousand, but it's a lot of record. I think the big thing is the front setback. If that's seventy-five feet, you're talking on minimum fifty feet from the back. That means the building's gotta be ten feet narrower in order to make that happen. So I think the applicant should be aware of that, absent a special exemption from ZBA.
And the special exception is to be able to take side, uh, access from a side, not your frontage.
Use the frontage where you're not taking the vehicle traffic, yes.
Okay, so.
Which I haven't heard it interpreted that way before, but that's, that's.
Yeah, I, uh, and the last question I had, uh, had to do with a request of waiver for professional certification. Can you explain that request?
We're just trying to control costs for the, uh, for the homeowners and, uh, um, certainly we have a licensed land surveyor's, uh, map of the entire, uh, of the property, the boundary survey and, uh, you know, showing the wetland. And felt in this case, just the amount of development going on here, that that was adequate. Obviously, there'll be a septic design also that has to be, uh, signed by, uh, subsurface disposal, uh, someone licensed in subsurface disposal. Felt that those were perhaps adequate for this application.
Well, uh, so going back to the, then the original question is if you have the, the, the property and then you have somebody that did the survey, did the test bits, signed off professional, if you provided that, why would you? And you're right about the septic system, somebody will have to sign off officially certifying that. Why would you even need this waiver?
Well, typically a, a drainage design would, you know.
Okay, drainage design. All right, well, it would need to be then more specific if you, you know, with respect to what you don't want, uh, what, you don't wanna get a professional certification for. Cause for the septic you are going to, and if you have the information from the surveyor that's signed off and certified, then you wouldn't need it for that either.
Okay. All right, then probably we would only need the, uh, the PE or only be asking for the PE stamp, um.
Okay, and I need to get the town planner's opinion about that?
Which one? Was that the?
On the PE? Uh, uh, what, do you think, uh, do you think that, that we should send this out once we get the information in to, for a third-party review or not?
I, I do. I mean, I, I, and, and like before, like I, I said before, it's, it would be to the drainage as, as they're proposing to make sure it's adequate. We'll be using, um, our new, um, a new engineer.
Well, okay, so.
But, uh, I, I, I just can't, I just don't feel comfortable with it. There's.
Right, right, no, I understand. So I, I, uh, this, I was asking with reference to uh, the question about whether we needed a PE to sign off on their drainage analysis, but if we're going to have a PE doing a second-party review on this, then, uh, that would make me more comfortable with waiving that particular requirement. Do you have an opinion on that, Marsha?
So, usually the drainage is designed by a PE. And that's what they, you know, our PE reviews their PE.
Right, yeah.
Type of thing, and that's typically, um, what happens, um.
I don't recall in the entire time that I've been on the board that anybody's ever requested a waiver of the professional certification.
Yeah, I've never, I'm, hey, I've been here eight years, never, no.
I, I just, I don't ever remember anybody requesting that. All right, so just trying to make a list. We're gonna wait for John to talk on frontage and setbacks, right? Give his input. Um, we need two driveway permits that meet town regulations, correct?
We need to, to question, um, Mark's the one who issues driveway permits. So, but we're doing this as part of a site plan approval, so yes, we definitely need to run that by Mark.
Right, I mean, they, they need dimension requirements, uh, widths and turn radii, you know, that meet our standards. Um, uh, can you tell, I don't know, the, the, the thing I was referring to earlier is, um, access points, uh, cannot be closer than a hundred and fifty feet to one another on the same side of the street. So I don't know if that meets that requirement or if that.
It's very close.
Yeah, so that, I mean, um, so we're gonna, we're, we are, so we're gonna be looking for driveway permits, parking and out, you know, we need some sort of parking or a waiver from parking, but we need a parking plan. There also has to demonstrate that they have sufficient. There also has to demonstrate that they have sufficient size and, and weight to handle deliveries, you know, whatever the delivery area is.
Yeah.
There's specifications.
So we, and to go with that, we need hours of operation and scope of business, I think, to, you know, for, for the site review, understanding what, more so what's going on. A drainage analysis, I think we've decided we will require.
Some statement about traffic and traffic loading.
Yeah. And that's why I didn't know that, that small traffic study doesn't seem cost prohibitive. If you look at the small traffic study, Marsha, you, you seem to think, no.
Well, I, I just, my, my concern was where are they coming from? Where are they going? How are they turning? That, that type of thing. I don't think the numbers are ever going to be an issue. I just not, you know, if we're, if we're, it is a commercial building. And I just wanted, you know, my concern was if you're hauling in race cars or whatever to, to be detailed and you're pulling them in on a trailer on a regular basis, you know, they're gonna come, is it, is the road adequate? And it's not really, to me, even the numbers, because I just can't see a steady flow of them coming through. It's.
No.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I think you gotta go through the requirements and ask for a ton more waivers or provide the information, really.
Yeah, yeah.
Lighting, I think we need a lighting.
Yeah, illumination plan, yeah, illumination plans required.
Yeah, you know, we have architectural standards, but I think the design's very nice, so I, you know, withhold caution on that, because I think it looks, looks like you're doing a nice job and it's nice.
The plans don't show where the utilities come into the building.
You know.
Which need to be underground.
You know, because it's supposed to be.
Stop access into the driveway, real, you know.
I actually have a question. There's a solid line that goes right over the proposed four-bedroom house square. What is that line? Is that utilities?
I just know something like a plot, I don't know what that.
It goes through the building and onto the other side, so I didn't think that would be.
Is it the overlap of building setback? Which, which plan you looking at, Steve?
Let's see, what am I on here? Revise Plan 426 at the bottom.
Yeah, there's a solid line that goes from the northwest corner of the property line through the stone wall, through the building and down.
That's pretty wrong.
Also, the, the road agent said that they'd have to install, he said a culvert, but now we know that there's two driveways, that the plans don't reflect the culverts that the road agent said would have to be installed with Pierce Road.
Dumpster location, if it's, if it's a public access point.
There also need to be erosion controls specified in the plans for construction.
Yeah, I mean, the parking's pretty minimal. I mean, we're looking at one space for 3,000 square feet, so I guess, is that right? Am I reading that right?
Well, yeah, I was thinking, part of that is kind of covered under the Table 5 Minimum Off-Street Loading Requirements, because that specifies a space also, so in addition.
That's, that's minimal.
Automotive services though, I think, Jamie.
Pardon me?
I think it's about automotive services, wouldn't it?
Um.
So I think one space per 400 square.
Where are you getting that from, Ron?
That's in Table 6. Table 6. Under Road Service Automotive Services.
It's not a service center. I mean, it's.
Isn't that? Yeah, I think that's more, I think it, I'm going to classify it more as retail maybe than automotive service, he's not really, but.
Yeah, I, I agree that we could end up, given the nature of the business, which is simply to bring the cars in, paint them, that brings up the question, how many cars would be on the property at any one time?
There'll be my, obviously my personal truck, my wife's car if she's not at work, and then if there is a customer's car, it would be in the shop. And then other, you know, like you said, the occasional trailer that comes when I do race cars that aren't road legal, would have to be parked outside. But that, there wouldn't be a ton of cars.
You know, sticking with road services, Jamie, if you go with automotive service, it's two spaces per service bay. If you just get one service bay, you know, that's, that's not that many spaces.
Yeah, no, and, and, yeah, I don't think that's asking too much, you know, just to delineate whatever that is.
Yeah, where would vehicles that are not inside the garage, where would they be parked? And is there adequate space for loading an outlaw?
You know, because, as with many commercial properties, you can't back onto the street.
And if you're bringing trailers in, you need turn radiuses and things like that to be thought through.
What's the board's expectation on landscape design?
I, I think there needs to be some kind of a plan and we need to address whether they intend for there to be any buffering between the business and 125 or not. I mean, I'm not, I'm willing to listen to suggestions, but I, so I'm not hard over, but there ought to be some kind of plan presented. There are requirements that say that there will be buffering.
Right, I agree with you.
So what, a landscape plan was something, or again, waivers to, to, to address. Marsha, what, what was your thought on, we require the 50-foot visual buffer from 125, but it seems to be counterproductive to what we've talked about over the years.
Correct, in zoning, we, we lowered that, which is a higher thing, because we want people to be able to see the businesses, but we want something that's visually pleasing.
Okay, so flexibility there, obviously, but I think we need some sort of landscape plan that shows, and it's been a vacant flat, no vegetated lot for as long as I can, so I certainly.
Field.
Certainly don't want you to go in there and plant 30-foot tall trees, you know, for no reason, but I think you do have to include some sort of landscape plan and so what we know it will be looking at.
Specifically on that, so you mentioned that the sightlines for that angled driveway are, are good, but I would emphasize that you'd be able to see from not just the end of the driveway, but from further back, to clarify.
Is there anything we're missing?
I, I would just, we've addressed this before, but just so that it's clear that in addition to the calculations, the plans need to reflect the construction details of both the infiltration trench and the driveways.
I have that.
Really, I think that the problem was there's a list of items that really come right out of the site review regulations that weren't included. That's, that's why, why we're at this spot. We're not trying to overwhelm the applicant at all. They have a beautiful project that they're looking to do, so the board obviously wants to be reasonable, but we do have to address the requirements.
I agree with that. We're not trying to short-circuit things here, but the board has to have certain information that we've delineated in the regulations in order to make decisions, and that's all we're asking for, yeah.
I did have a quick question, to come up with all this stuff. I, I'm not familiar with this process at all. I've never built a house or a shop of any sort before. To get all this, is, what is the turnaround time to, for like the, is there like another board meeting? Or how does that, like, how does that, how do we go about that? Just because like, we're trying to close on this land as soon as we can, obviously, and, and obviously the seller wants his money clearly.
Well, we have, well, we have meetings basically every two weeks. The, the first and third Tuesdays of the month, the requirements are that for any, once you submit an application and then you come back and you want to modify plans, provide additional information, you have to get that in at least seven days before the board meeting at which you're scheduled. You would ask, you're going to need to ask for a continuance, because obviously, you know, we can't proceed at this point, I mean, we could, I, I don't believe you want us to put up a motion about accepting the application and not accept it, because then you'd have to start all over.
Yeah.
So, so if you request a continuance from us, then you got to pick a date when you think you can get everything, all the information together. It's got to be submitted seven days prior to the meeting at which you have asked for the continuance to. You can ask for another continuance at that time if you can't get things together, but we ask people to please be considerate of the scheduling of board, that you be realistic about whatever date it is that you want to continue.
Okay.
I have a question, just, would it be advantageous to get it in so that it could go out for a third-party review prior to the meeting it's going to be considered for, just for accepting the application?
We have, yeah, you can coordinate that with the, with the, the town planner, but that's with a disclaimer though, that until you, we officially accept the application, you run a small risk that something could happen, and, and there is a cost associated with that, the second-party, third-party review, so. You can talk to the town planner, Marsha Gassis, about that. Am I correct, Marsha?
Yeah, we've had, usually when they come in there, the, for review, there are a little bit more complete information before we send to the engineer. But if, if you get your design together and, and you want us to send it out, they give you, they give us a price, I'll give you a price of what it will cost to review it. And you can, you can do it ahead of time if you, if you so desire. It's not uncommon.
But knowing that, I mean, as long as you have the work done.
Yeah.
For the next meeting, then we'll proceed forward pending review. And, you know, you guys know what you're doing in regards to that, so there shouldn't be issues.
Yes, so we could speed things up if that's what you're asking. I just want to be, you know, I, I just want you to be aware that, you know, that you're going to have to pay a cost for that, and I, I have no reason to believe that things can't move forward, but just in case they can, that would be a cost that you would absorb, which you absorb whether or not your application is accepted and approved or not.
Right, I just wanted to know if you weren't going to even consider the application until.
No, no. No, no, we can accept, in fact, that usually happens concurrently, as Marsha said, a few people, they, they know they're going to move forward, they'll do whatever they need to do, resolve whatever issues. In that case, it's, they've already purchased the property and they're moving forward with the project. So they, they, we do have people that basically submit the thing for review concurrently with the application while we're working on the application, just to speed things up. I, I just want you to make aware that just because it goes for third-party review, whether we accept it or not, you're still going to incur that cost and, and just want to be upfront so you, you understand.
Thank you.
Well, I, we've covered most everything and we're going to hear back from John Huckins on the setback issue, just will help us align where, where things are going. But I guess at this point, and Connor, feel free to, to speak up, I think we need to put it the first meeting in June, whatever date that is.
June 1st.
June 1st.
June 1st.
With respect to the comment that, to add on or ask a question, the, Marsha asked you about the, the regulations or made the comment, that all we're trying to do is ask for the information that's required by the regulations that will allow us to do our jobs. So, did you go back and review the application with respect to the site review plan regulations when, before submittal?
I went through the checklist only.
Okay.
Not, not through the entire regulations.
Okay, thanks.
So you would like. Project, go ahead, excuse me. Part of what makes this project tricky is that you're trying to do a lot on not much space, and that's just inherently challenging. Not necessarily impossible, but there's, it's tricky.
And then that is commercial, so we're, we're held to a different standard because it's commercial. We have to look at it from a commercial perspective compared to residential. If it was completely residential, it'd be a different conversation altogether. And I know that's how they want to use it, but it's just, it's not the makeup of the lot, so we have to kind of cross all these Ts and dot some Is on a commercial slant.
It's actually a pretty good lot, though. I mean, it's actually a pretty good-sized lot. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, it's almost too big.
It's, yeah.
It's got some wet spots, but hey, nothing that can't be overcome, so, you're all set, Mr. Fogg and Mr. McDougall?
We have to, yeah, we have to make a motion for.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Continue consideration.
What's that?
The motion to continue consideration, where you didn't actually accept it as complete.
Well, I'll give Andy his chance, he's been dying to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider you, continue consideration for case number 263-28-RC-21-SR.
I second.
Motion by Andy M., second by Jeff.
When do we continue with two, I guess, that's my question.
Uh, June 1st.
Yeah, sorry, to June 1st.
June 1st. Andy M.
Andy M., I.
Don Succi.
Succi, I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Andy Napp.
Napp, I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
James Jensen, I. Motion carries, consideration continued to June 1st. I, I would just say, Mr. Fogg, follow up in the morning, I, you know, Marsha's taken off at the end of the week, but just to follow up with John, he should be back in the office, we think tomorrow, correct, Marsha?
Well, I, he, he mentioned this, this whole COVID thing threw everything off, but yes, and, and I will be out of town at my daughter's wedding and be back probably on Wednesday.
Is John available for phone conversations still, even though he's?
Yeah, John is, and I, I think, you know, I can't make that determination, but I think he was speaking of possibly being able to come in tomorrow.
Okay.
But he was available by phone, too.
Perfect, all right. Thank you guys for your time, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, that was number, that was number four.
No, that was five.
Number five, thank you. Does anybody need a five-minute break or just moving on quickly? Pardon me?
I could use one.
All right, let's take a quick break, I could use the restroom itself.
Okay. Okay.
Now, this section should be quick. What do you got? Couple of private roads and?
It's all up to us.
Yeah, come on, guys. Couple of private roads and, in a minute.
Since I'm abstaining from all of these, can I just go?
We still have a quorum, so yeah, if you had technical difficulties, Andy, and all of a sudden your computer shut off.
Yeah.
Who are we to say?
I think we have a quorum without you, Andy, so.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
And by the way,
I apologize for not being able to, I've got to get this shared screen thing down pat. I'm like frustrated, it's fucked.
Do you have, you have two screens, Marcia?
Yeah.
So that, you, you need to look at that because that may be why you're struggling with the shared screen. If you have it open on one screen, but you're not sharing that screen, that's why you're not seeing it.
That's it.
More importantly, Marcia, congratulations on your daughter's wedding.
Thank you. It's, I'm, you know, it was one of those ones with the COVID that got delayed and by God, we're going and I'm getting, going to Moab, so supposedly beautiful out there, Moab, Utah. I'm very excited. I made it through without being positive of COVID. That's the biggest part.
My daughter got married a year ago, August, so that she beat COVID.
Hey, Marcia, so John and Barbara are okay?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, she's getting better. She's getting better, but yeah. What, I was the only one who managed to not.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, I worked like heck at that. You kidding me? Between the wedding and chemo and?
Have you been, have you been vaccinated yet?
Oh, yeah, I was, they got me right at the beginning, so I've been vaccinated. The only issue, and people don't realize this, I guess, but of course, my daughter does vaccines development, so she, she understands some of this, and she warned me was because I, when I had surgery, they had to load me with steroids. Steroids, steroids can affect the efficiency of the virus that the.
Yes, they can. They tell you to not take steroids when you're vaccinated. Just like they tell you, don't take Tylenol or Advil before you get vaccinated. Wait until a few hours later because that will impede the efficacy also.
I mean, it's hard. You have to do what you have to do, but I, I didn't catch it, so we're good, right?
Are you back, Jamie?
I'm back, can you hear me? I know, I wanted the Johnson and Johnson one, but it got pulled right as I was supposed to go.
It's back up. You can get Johnson and Johnson again.
That's the one I prefer to have.
I got, I got double tapped with Moderna, I'm happy.
Yeah.
If you look, if you look at it, it's interesting because the Johnson and Johnson's great from the single vaccination standpoint. But when you look at like the efficacy of it, it's, it's, and I don't know if efficacy is the right word, but the, the impact is greater with the, with the double dose than it is with the series, with the single series. So yeah, I guess efficacy is the right word because the effectiveness of it.
Okay, we got applicants waiting, so we need to get going here.
All right. Uh, we got reports from other committees, unfinished business?
We still have two more.
A couple of private roads.
I'm just going in order.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so nothing there then? Number six, reviewer request for building permit for 319A Holiday Lake Shore Drive of Karen Gould. Any questions, comments?
Well, do we, are the Gould here or not?
Oh, it's a private road. We really don't, we just.
It's just a recommendation to the select board. Remember, we don't make the board decisions.
Yeah, I should know. I think that they might have, you know, shown up just to represent themselves. However, on this one, I'm confused and that's not unusual, but. So this is the one for the ADU or am I getting the wrong one?
Nope, you got it.
Okay, so I, I looked at, they went in for an application for an ADU, right?
Yep.
So they did the checklist and the checklist says, as the applicant or property owner ever obtained an ADU certificate from the planning department, they check no, although we do have what appears to be a copy of an application. But the second one says, will the ADU be located within the single family dwelling, attached to a single family dwelling, or located within a detached structure? If no, stop, your proposal will not qualify. And they checked no. So I don't understand.
Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. You're looking at the road. We'll let, we'll let John Huckins deal with the rest of it. You got, you got this whole packet and all that's extra information that's not even, you're just, is there anything going on on that road? I, I mean, I suppose you could, I, I just.
Well, wait a minute. If, if we, if we know what the rules are for ADUs, we're the planning board. We approve, you know, we're the one that proposed those to put them in the zoning regulations. If the select board is going to make a decision whether to grant the permit or not, they ought to be aware if in fact, it appears to me like they're just building a new building on the property to house an ADU. Is that correct?
I know. I mean, which is acceptable to do.
Yeah.
I mean, you can build a garage.
You can, you can build a garage, but the rules are that it either has to be in the house, attached to the house, or within another structure on the property. You can't just go out there and slap up an ADU all by itself.
Oh, yeah, a garage with an ADU above it.
I remember we went through this before.
And, and we, and the determination was, it was foolhardy to think someone was going to build the garage, get a permit for a garage, and then turn around five minutes later and come back and put an ADU above the garage. It was perfectly, you know, just like you can expand your house with an addition on your house to meet the square footage requirements for the ADU attached. You know, you can manipulate those numbers as long as you have the space to do it.
Okay, well, it, it wasn't clear from the application here that they're building a garage over which they are putting an ADU. It says create ADU over existing garages. That's what the application says. But then when they checked the blocks, they said, no, we're not putting this in an existing structure. So I, I'm confused.
No, I would say that the application was dismarked.
Yes, don't worry about it. It's not relative to what you're doing.
Um, yeah, but I'm with Jeff. I don't like it when the information's incorrect or something.
Yeah, but if you go like this, but if you go like this and take this part away that they don't have to give us and throw it away and just look at this part, you're so much better off.
Yes, yes, yes.
All I'm saying is, as a planning board though, because we're here to enforce the regulations, both the zoning regulations as well as the site in, in subdivision regulations.
That's what, no, that's John's job to enforce.
That's John's job.
No, no.
That is John's job.
The planning, if the planning board is going to approve, we're going to approve it. I know we're not approving it. We're making recommendations. But if this came in for us for approval, we'd have to make sure it meets the requirements. If we know it doesn't meet the requirements, then I, I feel that we do have an obligation to point that out to select board. Now, they can do whatever they want, but if we, if, to, to give them a letter saying we don't have a problem with something if we know that it's not meeting the regulations, I do have a problem with that.
Right, but you don't know it doesn't not meet the regulations. Just like it doesn't meet road standards when Steve brings it up. It doesn't meet road standards and he wants to make note of it, but.
That's a good example. If they don't meet the road standards, we typically are putting in a comment in here that says, oh, by the way, select board, you know, you understand that you're giving a permit on a road that doesn't meet the regulations. So we do point those things out.
Yeah, so we can make a note that number three was marked incorrectly.
Well, what line is marked? Because you know what, because I honestly, I didn't, I, I kind of, that's not what I'm looking at when I do the comment because I'm looking at the road. What, they, they made a mistake filling out the ADU?
Yeah, when they filled out the ADU application, the second one says, are you building it within an existing structure? And they said, no.
And it says, if you mark no, don't bother continuing because you don't qualify.
Right.
Exactly. Jeff's got a valid point, but just.
You just spent all that time because somebody checked the wrong spot. It's okay.
Well, that's the question is, I can't tell from looking at these drawings or, or what they say, whether.
Don't look at them.
Well, you know I'm going to look at them.
I know, that's why. This is, this is not put out by, I will, let me preface it. This is not put out by us. This is a packet that's put together and given to Barbara from this person who, from the woman from the select board. So, you know, this is really all we're looking at is the road. And I tell you that over and over again for the most part, but it's okay.
Yeah. I, um, in the road, it said, the road's, right?
Mark had some great comments, I think, on the road part.
That road's always washed, Ford, it's. It's wide.
But I'm with Jeff on this, you know, if, if you fill out paperwork directly, you check the wrong box, you, you don't meet the regulations, that's a problem.
For John to not give a permit. It's a problem for John, not for us. That's the whole point.
I think it should be found out recommendations though to point out that that was, that was there.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't have.
Well, I don't know whether they check the wrong blocks or not. I don't know that sitting here. I don't know that from the materials that I have sitting in my hand, whether that's correct or not.
I think looking at the plans, it clearly states that it's above a garage.
Correctly, they don't, they don't meet the requirements.
What's that?
What Jeff is saying, and I agree with him, if they don't, if they, if they check the box correctly, they don't meet the requirements. And somebody has an obligation to check the right box. It's not us.
You say.
Right, to get a.
Looking at the plans, you can tell. I'm looking at the plans too. I don't know what the hell I'm looking at.
Well, it's a garage and the ADU above the garage, whether it's attached to the house or detached.
Where is the garage?
No, I think, I think Jamie, it's, well, it's existing.
That's not relevant. Doesn't matter if it's existing or not. They can build a whole garage there if, if they meet the setbacks.
And then once they put a garage in an existing garage, then they can add the ADU to an existing building.
But where does it say it's a garage, Jamie? I got one, two, three drawings here. Where does it say it's a garage?
Uh, the narrative to create it over an existing garage.
And they have a drawing too, Jeff, that shows the garage in the first one.
But then it looks like, well, I guess that's the other question that I have is, the third page of the drawings that I have show what appears to be two large doors and an entry door in between.
There you go.
But then I look at the drawing, wait a minute, that, so that looks like it's kind of in the basement because if you look at that drawing, there's another floor above that. There's some stairways and it almost looks like it's two stories above the garage. Is that correct?
I, I don't know and it's not within my purview to review, I guess. It doesn't matter if they want to build a six story garage. I mean, if they get a barn and they're putting, I mean, as long as they meet the dimensional requirements and John has, you know, the 700 square feet and a detached structure and the rest of its storage space, I mean, they can do all kinds of stuff. I don't, I guess I don't understand.
Well, well, the question is that given the size of the building, which is 24 by 30, that's 720 square feet. If it were a two story ADU above the garage, then it would exceed the 750 square feet that is in the regulations for a limit on the size for a detached ADU. That's why I'm asking.
Right, but John has to enforce that.
So if somebody says, yeah, I want to, uh, if the guy that made the monument company said, yeah, and oh, by the way, I want to, I want to store dynamite in the basement and, and that select board asked us for an opinion, we wouldn't point that out that that's a dangerous situation? Say, hey, screw it, not our problem, man. John will take care of it.
I would, I would feel as though I, if I have to point out that dynamite's dangerous to the select board, I feel that we've done a poor job electing our select board, yes.
Yeah, but you know as well as I do, you're watching the nightly news that says, hey, this building blew up and took half the neighborhood and, oh, by the way, the planning board didn't say a word about it. You know that's the way it works.
I'll say, I did listen to the select board meeting the past two times and George Bailey did a very thorough job vetting the previous applications that we passed along. the previous applications that we passed along. He was, um, not an easy person to persuade to give a building permit. He had lots of questions, so I feel like they're doing their due diligence on their part. And it's just a matter of what is our role and if we wanna overstep that role and add extra information, I don't have a problem with that. But if we want, I mean, we've gone into the, we've gone in and said, hey, that header doesn't look sufficient for that garage door. I know I've built a garage and a two by 10 doesn't do that anymore. And we could talk about it all night long, but it doesn't make sense for us to do this.
But the whole reason we're doing this is to give them a heads up. We might know something that they're not aware of that, uh, when they're considering this application, based on what we do for a living as a planning board.
They're looking for you to look at the road.
Developmentally.
We don't have anything to do with roads.
But that's what's about access. These requests are all about access. That's, that, it falls under whatever the site is for, is for allowing access for, for a plastics or private road. That's what it falls under. Not that these things aren't important. I just don't want you to over-focus on somebody checking the wrong box.
All right, well, Ron and I are, it sounds like we're in agreement.
We give you all this information, but actually, Selectman Knapp is the one who wants the full package, so...
I think that's just fine. However, I do know that if, if the select board member Knapp is still awake and listening to all this, he knows, he knows there's questions about this being a legal ADU or not.
I understand exactly what you're saying and think it's definitely worth bringing up. I also think my takeaway out of this is, um, brand for select board.
All for it. But about the road, about, about the road.
You know, you're stirring, your speech is quite stirred now at this point, Andy. I can't understand a word you're saying.
Steve, you were making a comment?
Yeah, so about the road, I happen to live very close to it. Um, I remember seeing Holiday Lakeshore Drive. It's unpaved. It's often very muddy and rutted and an ADU is adding more livable space to this area. So at some point, I would point out that, you know, that road should maybe be paved. People are gonna live there. More people are gonna live there year-round.
All right, so reviewing the letter to the select board, um, any additions?
I'm with Jeff. Jeff, I would add a comment to the box, check incorrectly, just to make him aware of it.
Okay.
Rather than saying it's checked incorrectly, I would just add a sentence that says, upon reviewing the materials provided, the planning board notes, there is a question as to whether this project qualifies as an ADU under the regulations and leave it at that.
Perfect, I'm with you on that, Jeff.
And just please tell me why it's, it's, uh, it's inside, it was above a existing garage?
That's the problem is that the application's inconsistent as to whether it's inside an existing garage. It looks like they're adding new construction, which includes a garage, but, and, and it, it's not consistent. It's, it, they checked the box saying, no, we're not putting it in an existing structure elsewhere. They're saying it's over an existing garage. I don't know what the truth is.
Okay, and the applicant themselves can be very confusing based on my experience with that particular person, so...
Well, you just should have said that in the beginning because then I wouldn't feel bad about being so confused.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to send the letter without addition to the select board.
I second.
Motion by James Jensen, second by Jeff Brand, Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp abstained, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Motion carries. All right, next one, number seven.
Hallelujah.
Birch Lane.
You know, you know I hate these things, so, you know, maybe you'll be motivated to go over to Concord and change the law so we don't have to do this anymore.
We are looking at a building permit for Birch Lane. Comments, roads, road agent says the road's in very poor condition. Birch Lane?
I have one comment, and this is within our purview, Marcia. There's a typo on the letter.
Oh, good, okay.
Proposed work should be done, uh, should say not, not, no.
This is, uh...
Yeah, it should read, should not entail a lot of heavy traffic.
Were you questioning the condition of the road?
Well, I know it's a paved road and I can tell you Holiday Shore, Lakeshore Drive is far worse than Birch Lane.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just reading the road. Mark's comments that the pavement is deterior, very deteriorated pavement with an average width of 18 feet. Proposed work to be done should not entail a lot of heavy traffic, but any broken edges or potholes should be repaired.
Where's the typo, the typo that they said?
It's in, it's in the next to the, uh, the one, two, third line from the last.
The proposed work to be done?
Should not entail.
Should, oh, no, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Where is Birch Lane?
It's, um, right over after the causeway on the left-hand side heading toward Steve's house.
They're adding a second floor, kind of.
Yeah, they're keeping the house footprint and they're, they're going up. That's, that's not an insignificant job.
Well, John had a lot of questions about the structure there.
Yeah. Those are the questions I...
Hey, that's not our job. We don't deal with building permits.
That's right.
Right, but let John, he'll, he'll pick it all apart. He's gotta, that's what he does.
That's Huckin's job, not our job.
Couldn't, couldn't you have felt that way after the 30-minute debate on the last one?
All right, if there's no further comment, I make a motion to send the memo to the select board.
I second.
Motion by James Jensen, second by Jeff Brand, Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye, but I do have a problem with the header on the garage.
We'll fix that. I'll talk, I'll talk to Rockwell, um, and Andy Apples Kane, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Motion carries, memo sent. All right.
Minutes.
Anything else? Uh, minutes? There they go. Here they are. Questions, comments, corrections? Motion to approve.
I second.
Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye, wasn't there.
Okay, I'm staying. Uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Minutes are approved as written. Time and date for the next meeting. Motion to adjourn to, what's today? Uh, 18th, is that right, man?
FYI, I'll be out of town, so I won't be at the next meeting.
Can you do your homework and send us your notes before?
Uh, I will have to see.
Well, have a nice trip wherever you're going. Be safe.
It's just, just a one-dayer.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn till May 18th.
I second.
James, motion by James Jensen, second by Jeff Brand, Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Motion carries. See you in two weeks. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Have a safe trip, Marcia.
Thank you. Very excited.
Enjoy.